Councillors and members of the public, before we commence the meeting, I would like to draw your attention, especially the members in the public gallery, to the fire regulations etc which are on the screen behind me and on the screen in front of you. Assembly point is under the Waitrose canopy. And, what else have I got to say? Oh yes, please ensure that your mobile phones are switched off or switched to silent. And councillors, please make sure that your cards are pushed into the slot at the back of the unit. And as ever, please ensure you speak directly into the microphone. Members of the public, I would like to say that as a committee, we understand that the matter is under consideration tonight, can be emotive and they're obviously important to you as you've turned up this evening. However, please be respectful of those around you in the public gallery and indeed, the committee members and refrain from any booing, cheering or any other form of disturbance. Thank you very much. So now we move to the main items of business and item one is the minutes of the last meeting. They've been on the table before you for the last 30 minutes. Are you happy that I sign them as a true record?
Please.
Thank you. Apologies for absence. Fiona, have we any apologies?
Thank you Chairman. We've had apologies from Councillors Michael Goodridge and Kevin Deeney.
Thank you. Any declarations of interest?
Yes, councillor Seaborn has declared a non-percunory interest in relation to item 6.3. He's a member of Bramley Parish Council Planning Committee that's commented on the application and he's also a governor at Bramley Infant and Nursery School which could be affected by construction traffic should the application be approved.
Thank you. Any members, any questions from the public?
None Chairman.
Okay. Jeanette's not with us tonight, but are there any relevant updates to government guidance or legislation since our last meeting?
Thank you Chairman, none this evening. Thank you.
Thank you Elizabeth. So we come to applications for planning permission in the event that site inspections are necessary, which I shouldn't think they were because we were all out there on Monday morning, but should they be considered necessary, these will be held on Monday the 8th of January at a time to be agreed at the meeting. So moving on to the items of business this evening, item A1 is application reference WA oblique 2017 oblique 1763 and the proposal is for the erection of a two-storey side extension and alterations including dormer window following demolition of existing single-storey side extension revision of WA 2017 0899 at Hunt Cottage, Hambledon Road, Godwin. Tim, would you like to introduce the application please?
Thank you Chairman. Members, the application site outlined here in red, located to the east of Hyde Stale Crossroads, set back from Hambledon Road. The site is developed with a semi-detached cottage which forms part of a small group of cottages and houses, including Hyde Stale House to the north and farmhouse across the road. Just to note that grade 2 listed buildings, reference in report are here and here. This is a picture of the front elevation of the site. This semi-detached one here is the application site, subject to the application. This is the existing elevations, so from the front at the moment, there is a large catslide roof going up, you've got the front gable end here. There is also an existing flat roof side extension which is an addition, not the original part of the property, which currently contains a downstairs bathroom. On the side, as you can see, that's the gable here extends at the front and on the back it's got one dormer window and again, a catslide roof structure actually in the front. These are existing floor plans, three-bedroom semi-detached property, there's the flat bathroom at ground floor and other accommodation at ground floor. Proposed block plan, proposal is for a two-storey side extension following demolition of the existing flat roof ground floor addition. Here are the proposed elevations. So looking from the front, the extension will continue the ridge height at the same as existing, coming across here and down here and include a new front dormer window. View from the side that is extending towards, so the catside will be in the same line as existing, there's the front dormer window. They'd replace the existing, call it sort of an overhanging window feature, they'd replace, put that in on the new window. And then at the back, you see there's a small gable projection proposed here and this is the rear elevation, so there's the gable projection. That would propose to go above where the existing overhang comes, it would essentially infill that area there with a new dormer window there and then the overhang would stay as it is there. That is a view just from, you could say, from the neighbouring side and that's the rear gable coming out there. Proposed floor plans, it would extend out the kitchen and keep the bathroom at ground floor and upstairs, it would create additional bedroom with bathroom at first floor. We do have elevations which show the existing neighbouring adjoining cottage as well, so just from the front, you'll note the neighbouring cottage has had a side extension addition with a front dormer window. This is the proposed here. And from the back, there's two dormers there in the original part of the cottage next door and then there's one at the back in the addition. And at the back here, this is the proposal here, so that just helps give you perspective comparing them. In terms of determining issues with this application, the site is within the green belt. You'll note within the officer's report, officers consider that the extension is proportionate within the spirit of policy RD2. The councillor's heritage officer considers the pair of cottages to be an undesigned heritage asset. You will note that the proposal is a revision of a previous scheme. The previous scheme was withdrawn following heritage officer's concerns. The heritage officer now under this application is satisfied that the proposal will preserve the cottages and their character. Impact on visual amenity, the AONB and AGLB, those are material considerations in this scheme and the impact on residential amenity. You'll note that the extension goes up adjacent to the boundary, but beyond the boundary lies a shared access drive and not neighbouring amenity, someone's neighbouring outdoor space. If I can draw members' attention to the update sheet. You'll note, we've had some additional comments from the applicant's agent and this is really following the committee's site visit that we undertook. Some queries were raised by members on site visit whether any part of the proposal would overhang the boundary. The applicant's architect has confirmed by email that no part of the proposal would extend over the side boundary. An additional plan has been provided that shows the elevations of both existing extension attached neighbouring property and the proposal, so those are the ones I showed within the Verbally Chairman, officers received today an additional representation from the arts and craft movement. Officers have reviewed this representation and it doesn't raise any additional considerations that have already been considered by officers. And in terms of the reasons for conditions 1, 2 and 3 Chairman, officers have missed out accidentally some additional wording which should go at the end of the reasons for these conditions and that is that this is a pre-commencement condition as the matter goes to the heart of the permission. So that's just for noting Chairman and as you can see from the report, officers recommend permission be granted. Thank you.
Thank you Tim. Members, this application is subject to public speaking and I would like to invite Sylvia Harrison to come and speak first. Ms Harrison, I understand that the procedure has been explained to you, you have, yeah, that's it and you have four minutes from when you start speaking.
Good evening, Mr Chairman, Councillors. My name is Sylvia Harrison and I have lived at Hyde Stale House next to Hunt Cottage for over 30 years. I speak on behalf of our neighbours, all of whom have objected to this application as summarized in your officer's report. Hyde Stale Crossroads has long been considered a landmark as this early postcard drawing of Hunt Cottage demonstrates. Hunt Cottage was designed by the notable architect Ralph Neville as half of a mirror image pair of cottages which formed part of the headquarters of the Chidwickfold Hunt in 1884. Together with the listed 17th century farmhouse opposite, its barns and even a working red telephone box, Hunt Cottage stands in a prominent position at this archetypal country crossroads, in the Surrey Hills area of outstanding natural beauty and in what we will hopefully soon become a conservation area. Contrary to your officer's report, it is quite visible from the crossroads and most particularly on the main approach from Station Lane. The cottage is quite small, in reality, two usable bedrooms and a box room, small gardens front and back and parking for two cars. It is also on a much smaller plot than its twin Rycroft. Despite this, the application is an attempt to convert Hunt Cottage into a four-bedroom family house which at the same time removes any outside access to the back garden. Even with much more room to expand, Rycroft next door has only been able to extend to three bedrooms. Our objections to this planning application are therefore on the grounds of size, massing, lack of symmetry and matching architectural style for this twinned building. The cottages were designed to be symmetrical and this is an important aspect of their appeal. Until now, Waverley Borough Council has succeeded in preserving them as such. All past planning permissions for extensions to both Rycroft and Hunt Cottage have only been allowed when the extension is subservient to the main building. All hipped dormer windows have had to match the existing and new gables have not been permitted. We strongly believe that the same principles should apply to any new development at Hunt Cottage. Although the previous application for a large front gable has been withdrawn, this one still proposes a gable for the back together with dormers both front and back which are completely different from the existing ones. The roof height of any extension should also not exceed the equivalent part of Rycroft, again, to preserve the symmetry of the building. We therefore ask that you continue to protect the architectural integrity of this building by refusing this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now I'd like to invite Maxine Long from the Parish Council to speak please. Good evening councillor, as before, you have four minutes from when you start speaking.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr Chairman and Councillors, I'm Maxine Long and I speak on behalf of Busbridge Parish Council. This application is an unsatisfactory attempt to convert a small semi-detached cottage with two usable bedrooms into a four-bedroom family house. As the Arts and Crafts Society have said in their letter of objection, it not only contradicts your policy RD2 but also goes directly against NPPF, chapter 7, paragraph 64. The cottage has a small front garden, shared access and restricted parking for only two cars. There is also no possibility of any safe on-road parking due to the proximity of the crossroads. You will have noticed that there was an application passed by Waverley in 2001, this was never built due to lack of funds. This application also extended the cottage right up to its boundary. We must emphasize that this is where the similarities end. This application would have resulted in three good bedrooms rather than four, a bathroom and a downstairs lavatory rather than two bathrooms. It also produced a similarly enlarged kitchen. Externally, it better retain the symmetry with Rycroft, its identical twin. Although moved out to the boundary line, the side elevation would have remained unaltered in size and shape, thus avoiding the unsightly massing that will result from the current application. This far more reasonable proposal, suitable for a small cottage in a very small plot, would have only enlarged the building by 25.3%. Officers state that at 41.5%, the current application is appropriate and only marginally over the guideline. This is in our opinion, a serious misinterpretation of the purpose of the 40% guideline. The reason it is a guideline and not a limit is so that the individual circumstances of different buildings may be taken into account. If Hunt Cottage was detached in a much bigger plot, in a secluded position, not set right next to its boundary, with ample car parking and of no architectural significance, of course Waverley would correctly allow a larger than 40% extension. The cottage is none of these things, but it is a pretty cottage of architectural importance which with its twin half is an important part of the group of buildings that make up Hyde Stale Crossroads. The Parish Council with much local support has now formally agreed to apply for conservation area status for this group of buildings. This may be too late for Hunt Cottage, so it is up to you to ensure that it is properly preserved. Please reject this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'll call upon David Sharp, supporting the proposal. Not here? Right, okay. So members, I'll open it to you. Councillor Seaborn.
Thank you Chairman. I think we've heard two very, very clear expositions of the issues at stake. I was going to go over those, but I think the representatives have clearly articulated the conservation nature of, the desired conservation nature of Hyde Stale. And the fact that we're looking at a pair of cottages here, very clear to focus on, we're looking at a pair and preservation of the similarities is, I think, an important issue. Busbridge Parish Council and several of the residents have asked local members to bring this application to committee, which is why we're here today. And as far as I can tell, just about every surrounding resident has objected to the proposed extension, not in principle, but as we've heard, in the detail. In general, near neighbours are not against a modest and more sympathetic extension. I thank colleagues for participating in Monday's site visit and I trust that the visit helped help you understand the issues that we're talking about today. I also thank officers for the report and note that the proposed conditions make some effort to preserve the style of the building after extension if it is approved. I welcome this, but there's a couple of matters that I would like to go over and those are actually considered improbenance in the officer's report. So on page 15, impact on the green belt is discussed in the context of saved policy RD2, which has already been mentioned. And each of the three tests for RD2 are largely a matter of opinion. So test A looks at disproportionateness and the neighbours consider the proposals disproportionate and I'm inclined to agree with them. The 40% test is just failed, but as it has been said, that is a function of the setting. In other places, going over 40% would not cause concern. Here, it's right at the limit of what we think might be possible and it, in my view, makes it disproportionate. So we have an extension proposal which exceeds the 40% limit and the calculation is based on a baseline of including an extension whose genesis is somewhat uncertain. Test B looks at the bulk and setting after the extension. So the cottage will take on a far more dominant appearance after the extension is built, particularly given that it doesn't match the step-down ridge line of adjacent Rycroft Cottage and includes the bulky dormer to the rear which is totally out of keeping with the existing style of the pair of cottages. So I'm not satisfied that test B is met and test C is also failed in my view. This unlisted heritage building will become far more intrusive into the Hyde Stale scene if it is extended as proposed. So the other issue that concerns me is the one of parking. A four-bedroom property under Waverley's parking guidance requires 2.5 parking spaces, the 0.5 normally being a, well, being a shared space with an adjacent property and there is no slot for a shared space with Rycroft next door, so in effect, the guideline means that there should be three spaces for Hunt Cottage to satisfy the standard. Hyde Stale's a hamlet with the nearest facilities over two kilometres away in either Hambledon or Milford, so residents are critically dependent on the use of cars to access shops, schools, medical facilities etc. The road at the side of Hunt Cottage is private and on-street parking on Hambledon Road whilst not prohibited is not safe as we've already heard. So parking of more than two cars in front of Hunt Cottage will restrict access to Rycroft. There is space in the front garden of Hunt Cottage to create additional parking, so I would suggest that at the very least, the plans should be resubmitted with extra parking created by sacrificing some of the front garden. This is a case where acknowledging that the existing house has three bedrooms and therefore the parking status quo should be allowed is not addressing a very, what is a very significant issue. In the event that colleagues should decide in favour of approval, I would like to see an additional condition. Delivery of materials and plant during the business phase will suffer from the same parking constraints that I've just discussed. Consequently, it would seem appropriate to have a simple construction transport plan submitted and approved prior to any works commencing. Without one, I can see short periods where safety and access issues will arise and generate disputes with neighbours. So specifically because of my interpretation of the tests on the impact on the green belt, I'll struggle to support officers' recommendations to approve, but I will listen to colleagues' perspectives with interest before offering a final determination. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you councillor Seaborn. Councillor Band.
Thank you Chairman. Well, again, I thank the officers for arranging the site visit which I found very helpful and I listened to what residents in the parish council have said. Ideally, yes, this ought to be mirror exactly what was happening next door, but that doesn't mean to say in planning terms, what we have in front of us would not necessarily be acceptable. I can just about live with the differences in the front elevation, but what I find objectionable and not meeting the tests which councillor Seaborn has so, just so elegantly gone through is the rear extension and that overbearing appearance of the extended portion with the gable end. And I think that is most unfortunate because that makes it completely different to the neighbour cottage. It changes not just the detail, but the whole style and impact of the cottage. So I've got reservations about this application. As I say, ideally I'd like to see the same, but I would have found the changes to the front probably acceptable, but where I really come and start, I say, is the rear elevation and the overdominance of that rear gable construction instead of following the catslide with dormers as per the rest of the property. So I've got reservations about agreeing to this on that aspect, but I think it's a pity because this could have been sorted out, I would have thought, with further discussions with the applicant and to make something which meets their aspirations but looked somewhat less dominant. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you councillor Band. I do tend to agree with you, I think it's a good opportunity lost really, that it could have been made to continue the appearance of a pair of cottages which is so strong from the existing building. Rycroft went to the trouble of dropping the ridge and making their extension subservient and it's a pity that it wasn't mirrored on Hunt Cottage. I also have grave concerns about this, although we have an update which says the agent confirms that the extension would not extend over the side boundary. I don't see how we can judge that because there are absolutely zero dimensions on the plans and I find that quite frustrating. And it also, the boundary on the proposed plan is shown as parallel to the side wall, whereas on the block plan it's shown at quite an angle to it, so I don't think the plans are that accurate. And it worries me that we that went on the site visit could see quite clearly that that side elevation, it does project out at two points, it projects out at first floor level and then again at tile hanging level and then the barge boards of the roof extend over that quite a large way. And I know that our heritage officer has asked for that gable end to be reproduced on the extension and I just can't see without having dimensions how we can make any sensible decision on this application. Would anybody else like to speak? Yes councillor Ellis, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you Chairman. Actually, much of what I would want to have said has already been said. I do feel that in seeking to enlarge this to a four-bedroom property, they have actually to a great extent spoilt the look of the building. I think as a whole, I think the symmetry in this particular case is very important and I always feel that the officers are very keen to ensure as far as possible that any extensions particularly to a building of this nature would be subservient, that you would actually be able to look at the building and say, right, that's an extension. Very pretty pair of cottages. I do think that the people next door actually worked hard to ensure that the nature of the property was not changed too greatly. And I'm very sorry, but I do not feel that I can support the officer's recommendation. One other thing, small point but for me, the window on the side where they actually took out one glazed part, what a shame. I just felt that from the side, that was unattractive. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Henry.
Thank you Chairman. I'd just like to reiterate my thanks for the organisation, the site visit, it was invaluable. My concerns are with the rear elevation, speaking in very basic language, I believe this is quite unbalanced and the range of finestration is out of character, I feel. Another concern is the loss of smaller properties. This is quite a unique cluster of little houses, village houses in a rural setting and it would be a pity to lose the heritage value of this pair. And I would go along with my fellow councillors, echo their concerns with regard to symmetry and preserving things which are just a little bit special in a very special area. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gray.
Thank you Mr Chairman. I'd like to echo some of my other councillors' comments but try to be specific on my concerns. I would mention parking again, I think that, you know, it's a limited parking, it's a limited house. The way that they presented this on the front does offend me. I mean, there is no reason why they couldn't maintain the symmetry at the front. The rear aspect, I probably feel, unlike some of my other councillors, less concerned, although I think they could have done a lot more to improve that. But the real issue here for me is that they're pushing the boundaries again. We have a small house, people, you know, people look at this house and they come and they buy it and they want to convert it into something that the site and the design is not practical to achieve. It's up to them whether they want to block off their rear access, although I think that's quite difficult in a lot of cases, especially as they've no right to go round the side of it and I'm sure that would create some frustration in time. But I echo the point about this up to 40%. This is an overdevelopment of the site. If they kept it to three bedrooms, if they tried to make it more symmetrical, I'd have much more sympathy with the applicant and I just feel that I'm going to find it difficult to support this, but I'll hear what anyone else has. And I just feel that I'm going to find it difficult to support this, but I'll hear what anyone else has to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bayam. Councillor Voroghewski.
Thank you, Chairman. My apologies, I was unable to go to the site visit due to work commitments. I get the strong feeling that we're going in one direction with this application and I think, to use your words, Chairman, there has been a missed opportunity. And although I can't predict how members are going to vote, I would perhaps think it prudent that instead of, if we're minded, to refuse this application, that we take the opportunity before us because, as eloquently said by local residents, in principle, they're not opposed to development, but it has to be appropriate development for this site. So I'm just wondering if it's prudent at this stage to suggest perhaps deferring it, to go away and give the opportunity for the applicant with officers and perhaps residents to relook at this and then come back with something that's more suitable because clearly we have a good, healthy report in front of us with a recommendation that if we turn down, it's going to delay process. Now, I think there's an opportunity that we can actually come to some compromise where everyone's happy. So that would be my suggestion, is that we defer it until there's an opportunity for the applicant, officers and residents to come to a compromise. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Just before we consider that proposal, councillor Bayam.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, the public speakers gave a very clear understanding and demonstration of the problems they have there and the concerns they have. And my fellow councillors here, including councillor Seaborn, have said a lot, which leaves me very little to add to, really. I do believe that the building should be subservient, the extension should be subservient to it and the rear views, as people have said, are totally out of keeping. And they will be seen. It's not just a back garden. There are properties behind which we'll have access to and it is visible in this very prominent area. As the parish council have said, they wish to go forward. They've made a formal decision at parish council meeting that they wish it to become put forward as a conservation area. And indeed, the conservation officer in his report, in this report and in other places, suggests that it's a non-designated heritage area. So I can't see a good reason why perhaps it would fail, although that will obviously have to go through the mill to see what happens. So I'm unhappy. The other point about the planning application, which was passed sixteen years ago, did have, as I think been mentioned, a subservient drop-down extension. And indeed, Rycroft, I believe, I've been led to understand, actually followed that route because that was the permission they got and therefore they had to do the same. They went ahead and did their extensions, Hunt Cottage didn't. And now they want to go out fully, at full height, and make it an unbalanced-looking property. I'd be interested to see how the wheelbarrow gets on going through the house. I'd hate to think of having a garden. In fact, I have a neighbour who, that their predecessors did away with all access other than through the house and so they rely upon my happy attitude of allowing them to use my drive to get down the side of the house and to maintain the side of the property. Luckily, that neighbour's been with me for thirty-nine years and we don't fight. But I think it is a rather strange move. A smaller property with a side entrance would be good. Parking has been spoken about. I think it's overdevelopment and out of keeping with the design. As has been very strongly said, we said we had another report coming in from the, or a letter from the Arts and Crafts Movement online. There is, I think, just two and a half page piece about the whole of the Arts and Crafts objections to this, together with an objection for, from an architect of some note in the village, just a fairly short way away from here, who again writes one and a half pages about this and indeed the architect, which that particular guy has, I believe, taken a great deal of interest in Neville, the architect, and his works over a century ago. So I'm afraid I can't support this application.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Councillor Voroghewski has very sensibly suggested that we vote for a deferral. Does that suggestion have a second up? Okay, thank you. That's councillor Gray got his hand up first, councillor Senet. But welcome back councillor Senet to the Eastern Officers. Do you have any comments to make before we move to that recommendation?
Chairman, just to add that I think we've listened to the concerns of the committee and that if you do defer it, we've got a clear idea about what we would take back to the applicant to suggest an amendment that would meet with your expectations. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. So how do we deal with this? Do we just put it to them as a proposal?
Yes, the proposal is to defer the application and for planning officers to speak with the applicant to see if they would be interested in coming up with an alternative proposal.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Bayam, you wish to speak to the proposal?
Yes, in a way I welcome the proposal. On the other side, the changes that I personally feel are necessary are perhaps too substantial to be coped with by a deferral. But if officers feel that they can deal with it in a robust manner, so now asking the applicant to change their designs, et cetera, and perhaps give us more information that the chairman wanted with regard to its relationship with the boundary and the problems of building out and not broaching the boundary line with their construction, I would be happy to go along with the deferral. But we must be dealing with it in a robust.
Thank you. I'm sure our officers will be as robust as necessary. Members, the proposal for a deferment is before you. All those in favour, please?
Ten in favour.
Against?
And one against.
So the motion to defer this application is carried. Thank you. Item A2 is, I don't know if any of the members of the Public Gallery wish to leave at this point or whether you're happy to stay on and, yeah? Right, members, we move on to item A2, which is application reference WA oblique 2017 oblique 1061. And the proposal is the approval of reserve matters, appearance, landscaping, layout and scale following the outlined approval of WA oblique 2014 oblique 0249 for the erection of twenty-four dwellings at land adjacent to Little Sadler's Ricardo Court Bramley, GU50HU, as amended by plans received on the twenty-second of September 2017 and the thirty-first of October 2017. Tim, once again, would you like to introduce this application?
Thank you, Chairman. Members, the site lies to the north Ricardo Court within Bramley. The site is currently undeveloped with a natural grass and surface and tree line along the south-west boundary. The site comprises, the site surroundings, sorry, comprise existing residential development except beyond the south-west and to the north-west. By way of a background, the site benefits from outline permission where the principal of twenty-four dwellings was established along with the means of access. This slide shows the indicative layout that was provided for the outline permission. It should be noted that this was indicative only and not fixed layout. This plan also highlights the adjacent greater list of buildings next to the site there. The section 106 agreement for the outline permission defined the developable areas and the areas to be open space and play area. This is the proposed site layout before you. The proposal seeks approval for reserve matters, which include the layout, scale, appearance and landscaping of the residential scheme. Vehicle access would come in off Ricardo Court there to the south, as agreed at outline stage, and would feed into the site with two cul-de-sac roads coming off it. Garden spaces are proposed throughout the scheme, which include a variety of dwelling types and designs. Some flats are proposed within the scheme, which include two flats here above garages and a block of four flats here. The proposal includes sixty-two point five percent affordable housing, as agreed at the outline permission stage. A play area is proposed along with the open space to the left on the screen. The northern access point to Park Drive is to be pedestrian and cycle access only and not for vehicles and that was agreed at the outline stage as well. In terms of landscaping, this is a landscaping plan. Apologies, it's in black and white, but some soft landscaping is proposed throughout the scheme. Notably, a number of trees are proposed and the trees proposed are the dots you can see here and here. So as you can see, a number of them are proposed throughout the site. In terms of designs of the proposed dwellings, I've put each individual property proposed within the agenda, so I'm not going to go through each of them this evening. But I've just got some coloured street scenes here which help put things into perspective, along with the external materials. So the external materials proposed throughout would comprise a mixture of slate and clay roof tiles, tile hanging exposed brick and dark stained timber boarding. So you can see from these street scenes the materials proposed. So, for example, the orange is the clay tiles and the dark is the slate with the dark stained timber boarding on these properties. And again here, for example, that is the block of four flats near the front of the site. So that's been designed in a way to look like a two-storey house. You can see throughout the scheme that it is predominantly two-story dwellings. The ridge heights do vary between them, but predominantly, yes, two-story approach. And further, some, another street scene proposed, as you can see here. This is taken from the applicant's design access statement. This just helps, it's a 3D visual aid but in colour, just helps give a bit of context to the scheme or looking to achieve. It's actually taken from the north-west corner, looking southeast. So this is the open space where a play area would be here. And as you can see, the residential development with the surrounding Ricardo Court, Sadler's over here, the dwellings here. Some site photographs. I think most members were on the site visit, which is good. But just a quick refresher. So this is looking from Ricardo Court Road. The vehicle access point is just to the left here off-screen. You can look here, the site, obviously largely laid to grass. The site is slightly higher up than neighbouring properties to the north. These neighbouring properties here. That's the proposed pedestrian and cycle access point here through to Park Drive. Again, the existing access approved has been put in. And there, if you can just see the site and surroundings here. And just looking further down Ricardo Court, so you can see the access point here. As part of the 106 agreement under the outline permission, new parking was put in and agreed at the outline stage. So the applicants have done that and that was done during the summer outside of school term time, just to assist with vehicle movement. I'll turn members' attention to the update sheet first. Members will note the three additional letters of objection received from third parties. A summary from us has been provided in our response below. Resulting from this, you will note that some requests can be accommodated and an amended landscaping plan was received from the applicant, which included fencing along the eastern boundary and that following discussions with the council's tree officer, we can change the five-year protection to ten years, just to assist with the protection of the new trees to be planted. Therefore, Chairman, we are proposing some amendments to existing conditions as shown on the update sheet. Just another verbal update, under the reason for condition eleven within the report, some wording has been missed off and it should have at the end of it, that this is a pre-commencement condition as a matter relates to highway safety. So, members, in terms of the determining issues with this application, the main issues are, for your consideration, to scale, layout, appearance and landscaping of the scheme. I draw members' attention to the visual impact and impact on residential community under those considerations. Further, the site is adjacent to a conservation area and greater list of buildings. Members will note in the agenda that officers have identified a proposal would cause less than substantial harm to the setting of the grade two list of buildings. However, officers consider on this issue that there are public benefits within the scheme to outweigh this. So the impact on the setting of these heritage assets is a material consideration in the termination of this application and a consideration for members this evening. So overall, Chairman, officers recommend the reserve matters be agreed, subject to the changes proposed to the conditions on the update sheet. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Again, this is for public speaking and I would first invite Neville Lyons and James Garthwaite, objectors who are going to share their four minutes allocation. I trust the procedure's been explained to you, gentlemen, and you have four minutes between you from the time. And whoever goes first starts speaking. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr Chairman. Thank you for allowing us and councillors the opportunity of speaking, together with James Garthwaite, on behalf of fellow residents whose houses have joined the northern and eastern borders of the development site. We fully accept the need for development of twenty-four houses as approved by the committee in 2015. But we do find that the indicative layout, which was submitted with the outline plan, would have been more acceptable than the proposed layout in the detailed application. Against the eastern and northern borders of the development site, there are now four plots containing five houses and four flats, compared with two plots in the original indicative layout. For the northern border, plots one and two are now considerably closer and more intrusive to our houses in Park Drive than we had expected. The gardens in Park Drive are much shallower in real life than they appear on the plan. So the existing houses in Park Drive are nearer the border than they would appear to be on the plan. And for the houses in Bramley Park Court, similar concerns relate to the closeness of plot nine. Neighbouring residents were not consulted by the developers in advance of the detailed application, but at a meeting which was organised by Bramley Parish Council last August, we did discuss our concerns with the developers. The two minor amendments to the detailed plan were circulated, but they do not fully satisfy our concerns regarding closeness of the plots to the existing residences. So may we respectfully request that the committee considers some revision of the proposed layout in the light of residents' concerns. Now I pass you over to James Garthwaite.
Thank you, Neville. Mr Chairman and councillors, I live at Sadler's, the listed building next to the proposed site and I've been there for twenty-two years. This development harms the character and setting of a listed building. Sometimes that's unavoidable, but in this case it is largely avoidable and it's unjustified. The developer's heritage statement concluded that the harm to Sadler's was less than substantial because the loss of its rural setting was offset by the fact that its secluded surrounds would not be affected. Can a house and garden really remain secluded when they're directly overlooked by a very close and unbroken line of new buildings on the new plan? The hastily added row of trees is a sticking plaster. I suggest that ten years of partial screening, whilst better than nothing, is not enough to protect the setting of a four-hundred-year-old building. Listed buildings need respect, protection and care in perpetuity. The report for this committee concludes that the public benefit of new affordable housing outweighs the harm to Sadler's. With respect, this is no justification for a very simple reason. It is perfectly possible to provide... It is perfectly possible to provide this much-needed housing on this site without causing such harm. We just don't have the right plan yet. Waverley's own heritage officer cannot support the application for this reason. So in summary, this plan is unnecessarily intrusive to existing houses on its north and east side and it does avoidable and unjustified harm to a listed building in a conservation area. We therefore respectfully request that the committee reviews the application in light of our joint comments.
Thank you, gentlemen. Now I'd like to invite Francesca Stern of the Parish Council to speak. Good evening, councillor, you have four minutes from when you start speaking.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, councillors. I'm chairman of Bramley Parish Council. I'd just like to remind the committee that in 2015, the Eastern Planning Committee gave serious consideration to the original application for outline planning permission on this site as it is outside the village settlement area and in the green belt. But Bramley Parish Council has always been supportive of development on this site, recognising the need for additional housing in our village, particularly of the affordable variety. We supported the original application by Paul Hunt in the face of not-inconsiderable objection from some of the residents of the surrounding properties. Leading up to that application, Paul Hunt consulted extensively with Bramley Parish Council and residents on the number of houses, types of housing units and layout of these units. Only when both sides were satisfied did Paul Hunt submit the application. We now have a situation where the site has been sold on to a developer with no links to the village as the original owner did and who has redesigned the layout with only cursory consultation with the parish council and none at all with the local residents until after the application had been submitted. We do not understand why it has been necessary to change the original layout, indicative though it may have been. The new layout is far more intrusive to the surrounding residents than that of the original layout. The response by the developer to residents' concerns is to include a bit of additional screening as compensation for the invasive proximity of some of the proposed new builds. This is not good enough. Given that the original layout was perfectly adequate, there does not seem to be any good reason for accepting the new and inferior redesign. I would like to quote from the officer report, policy TD1 of the draft local plan, part one, which echoes that of policies D1 and D4. New development is required to be of a high quality and inclusive design to respond to the distinctive local character of the area. Developments should be designed so that it creates safe and attractive environments whilst maximising opportunities to improve the quality of life, health and wellbeing of current and future residents. This layout for the proposed new builds in this application will certainly not improve the quality of life, health and wellbeing of the current residents. It's fairly well-known that the imposition of invasive and overbearing new builds, impositions where they're not properly appreciated, can create stress and angst which leads to a degeneration of health. Bramley is already suffering from heavy increases in traffic through its centre. The causes of this extra traffic are out of our control. However, when it comes to planning applications within our parish, there is no reason why they should not be designed with respect and consideration for the existing residents and their immediate surroundings. I urge therefore that the committee take serious note of this flawed layout in their deliberations. The parish council and our residents will have to live with the consequences of your decision and I sincerely hope that the committee will agree that this is not an acceptable layout and does not properly comply with policy TD1. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I'd finally invite Karen Tipper, the agent, to speak in support of the application. Good evening.
Thank you, Chair, members. This reserve matters application before you follows the grant of outline planning permission in March 2015. This outline set the indicative master plan for the site and is defined by the parameters within that approval. It included affordable housing, position and size of public open space and the access point. The development will deliver a number of public and community benefits including fifteen affordable homes which equates to sixty-two point five percent. This far exceeds both the existing and emerging local plan policy requirement of thirty percent. This provision would include ten affordable rent and five shared ownership dwellings. Eleven car parking spaces have also been provided in Ricardo Court and were delivered in August this year during the school holidays. Additionally, a large area of public open space is secured in the southwestern corner. The application has been subject to detailed discussions with planning officers, statutory consultees, parish council as well as local residents. This collaborative approach has been brought about to create a sympathetic design response which considers the site within Waverley, Bramley and in particular its relationship with adjacent properties and landscape boundaries. In addition to the statutory consultations, the applicant, Martin Grant Homes, has met with individual residents, including the occupiers of Sadlers', the grade II listed building located to the east of the site, in order to listen to concerns and accordingly the application has been amended. The changes brought forward have particularly related to boundary planting, roof pitches and garage positioning to limit the visual impact of the setting of adjacent properties. Furthermore, following consultation with the planning officer, heritage officer and residents of Sadlers', additional amendments have also included detailed landscape proposals, analysis of height, scale and species of trees to ensure the proposed scheme is not at the detriment of this adjacent heritage asset. Indeed, in addition to this, the client has also recently agreed to incorporate a closed bordered fence along the eastern boundary as a direct response to resident concern. In terms of layout, the proposed dwellings have been positioned to provide appropriate distance to boundaries, form active street scenes through the use of corner turning houses and create a relationship between homes and open spaces, harmonising architecture, landscape and ecology. The establishment of a pedestrian and cycle link connecting Ricardo Court and Park Drive has been formed through the centre of site with the prominence of the car removed from the street, using landscape to define development and promote sustainable transport and living. The elevation treatment for the dwellings takes cues from the local vernacular, including traditional form and material palette, which uses key features such as bays and chimneys alongside with a mix of brick types, tile hanging and boarding. The areas of general street landscaping has been delivered alongside the public open space obligation within the section 106 and ensures that landscape is integrated into the scheme as a driving force for boundary treatment and plot definition. Respecting the existing context, hedgerows and tree planting has been a key proposal from the outset, maintaining the rural aesthetic and with landscape proposals further enhancing the site's verdant nature. In conclusion, the process has been one led by collaboration with your officers, consultants and local community. We are of the view that the scheme before you accords with the approved outline permission and has fully considered representations made during the consideration of the application. We respectfully request that you support your officer's recommendation and permit this reserve matters application. Thank you.
Thank you. Members. Councillor Seaborn.
Thank you, Chairman. As with the previous application, tonight is not around principle, it's around detail. Broadly speaking, this development will be of benefit to Bramley. The high proportion of affordable homes and the number of one- and two-bedroom properties accord well with the findings of Bramley's recent housing needs survey. At a stroke, the twenty-four homes make major inroads into Bramley's requirements to deliver at least ninety new homes during the new local plan period. So as I said, today's discussion's not about the principle which was agreed at outline stage, it's about the detail covering the reserve matters. I thank colleagues for joining the site visit on Monday and I hope that you benefited from the opportunity to consider these outstanding issues at close quarters. The relatively large number of objections to the application influenced the decision to request that we have this discussion this evening in committee. The report addresses many of the issues and demonstrates that Waverley and the developer have been making some effort to be sensitive to residents' concerns. Overall, it's been disappointing that the original interspersing of market and affordable housing at outline stage has given way to a very clear two-part development with the affordable housing concentrated to the south. However, I understand the commercial logic used to justify this move, but it leaves me with some residual concerns on three aspects. First one, and I think for me by far and away the most important, is the report's overruling of the heritage officer's conclusion that the less-than-substantial harm to the setting of Sadlers' is not outweighed by the public benefits of the proposal. So in other words, it's in contradiction of MPPF 134. I'm a little bit concerned about the parking arrangements which on close inspection appear to be a little less substantial than the report makes out. And I was concerned about the security of the screening provision to separate the new site from existing residences, but I very much welcome the addition that's been made to the period during which the new screening will be protected and I think that largely addresses that concern. So if I start with the heritage aspect, I refer colleagues and officers to the penultimate paragraph on page seventy of our papers. The first sentence agrees with the Borough Heritage Officer's report of the 22nd of September. The discussion which then follows contradicts the heritage officer's published conclusion which ends with a statement, 'I cannot support this application of reserve matters'. Furthermore, the heritage officer says that the problem could be overcome by redesign of this part of the development and that's a point that's already been made to us by speakers. No attempt appears to be made, have been made, to try and overcome this concern of the heritage officer. So given how often officers warn members of the peril of ignoring expert opinion, can I ask officers to explain why they've chosen to ignore their colleague's published conclusion and also ask my fellow members to consider if acceptance of the plans as they stand is acceptable in terms of preserving the setting of Sadlers' as a historic building on the edge of a historic ribbon development? So the second concern was around the parking arrangements and I think on balance, they're probably just about work. The concern I had really is that because the site has now been split into a northern market development and a southern affordable development, if you look at the parking provision in detail, you will actually find that for the affordable element, it just about meets Waverley's parking guidelines and the surplus, this clearly flagged in our report, largely refers to the northern market segment. I struggle to actually make the numbers in the report add up to what's in the plan. I think an element of this is around the two-point-five car provisions which actually appear to include literally two and a half spaces, which of course, no one owns half cars. It's either that or it's double counting of the shared parking. Either way, the numbers don't quite add up as far as I can see from the plan, but overall, it just about works. I was going to say a little bit more about the screening, but I think the principal concern of having the screening protected for ten years rather than five years will give it a much better chance to establish and do the job that it's been set out to Beyond that, I welcome the detail of the condition eleven where transport movements have recluded during drop-off and pick-up times at the infant school. The route to the A281 from Ricardo Court meets a major pinch point in the Coombs. I'm glad to see that construction traffic will not interfere with the already challenging business of getting pupils in and out of the school. So in conclusion, while I broadly support much of the application, my decision on this, particularly the layout aspect, will be influenced by colleagues' views about the importance of the heritage officer's conclusion and I'd be very interested to hear what officers have to say about their choice to ignore the on-record conclusion of the heritage officer. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Councillor Seaborn. I think Elizabeth would like to respond to your concerns.
Thank you, Chairman. I think it's really important to address it head-on because it's raised a very valid point, Councillor Seaborn. Prior to the MPPF, if the Historic Buildings Officer had identified significant harm to the setting of the listed building, planning authorities would ordinarily have taken that as a standalone reason to resist development in isolation because in the world before the MPPF, planning considerations tended to be considered in isolation and everything else being equal, if you had one particular reason, it used to result, generally speaking, in the rest of the scheme failing. Clearly, the MPPF has taken into us, into a very new world of decision-making which we're all having to grapple with and requires at every point of consideration the exercise of the planning balance and the impact on heritage assets is no different, which is why paragraph 134, which we've correctly set out for you, draws attention to that, that we take into account in the first instance, is there an impact on the heritage assets? Is it a designated heritage asset or non-designated heritage asset? Is the harm substantial or less than substantial? And of course, we take the valued view of our heritage team into account at that point. But the consideration cannot stop there, so it's not a question of ignoring that input. We're required by paragraph 134 to go on to balance that against the other benefits of the scheme. So it's not that we've ignored that view, but we've done what's required of us as planning authority to then balance that less-than-substantial harm, which of course we've accepted is the right judgement, against the other benefits of the proposal. Now that is a judgement and our judgement as officers that taking into account the benefits that the scheme would bring, that in the round, taking into account the requirement of paragraph 134, that the harm is outweighed by those benefits, but it is a judgement and it is your judgement equally taking that into account. So I hope that's explained that point and the way you've set it out. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Councillor Townsend.
Thank you, Miss Chairman. I attended the site visit and it was very, very useful to see the position of this site within Bramley and I recognised that Bramley Parish Council obviously very much supported the scheme. I am disappointed therefore that they haven't, the developers of the site aren't going ahead and haven't continued that consultation with the parish council. I was really disappointed, I wasn't familiar with this site, but I was really disappointed with the layout. Entering the site from Ricardo Court, you are really confronted with what will end up looking like a small car park because all of the parking is at the front of the properties there in parking bays. I don't think it is an attractive design at all. One of my big concerns is the effect on the listed building. We do need to create places that are sympathetic to both residents that already live there and to the buildings that are already there, especially buildings that are listed. I was particularly concerned about the position of plot nine over in the corner by the Bramley Park Court, bearing in mind, as was said in the officer's introduction, that the Bramley Park Court is lower than this development and the building there, the material that's used on it from what I can see in the report, is that it is a very dark building and requests were made for the roof to perhaps be hipped to make the bulk and scale next to the Bramley Court much less and I think that something could have been done there to lessen the impact of a big dark building on the residents of Bramley Park Court there. I also thought that I couldn't see anything about the provision for sewage network. I did look back onto the original outline approval and I couldn't find anything on the outline approval as well. Thames Water have just said against this application that it does not affect Thames Water. I don't understand what that means. Is Thames Water not the sewerage provider in this application? And I couldn't see, as I say, anything against the previous application to say that sewerage had been dealt with. I am concerned that when people enter this development, that it will look like a parking court and that adequate provision hasn't been made for bin storage as well and I would welcome officers to say where people are going to keep what could be three bins per household in this development. I was welcoming the boundary treatment, that's very welcome, to the western side, no, eastern, sorry. And I also took note of the Surrey Hills and their reservations as well. So I would welcome some comments on... So I would welcome some comments on the bin provision. I too don't think there's enough parking provision available here, and also the plot nine and the sewage perhaps. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Officers, did you want to respond to the queries about Thames Water, et cetera? Okay, while you're conferring, councillor Byrne would like to join in. Thank you.
I'd be interested to hear what the answer is with regard to Thames Water. I wouldn't have expected there to be a problem. In the northern corner, when we walked around, having done all the flaying, preparing the site for development when they get permission, there were two very large or detailed drain covers, which I would suspect are possible sewage covers, but perhaps I'm wrong. Either way, the village doesn't suffer, except that some of the pumping stations have failed in the past, but everything seems to be working all right, and I wouldn't expect there to be a problem. One of the big things about this, of course, is the fact that, and we get it for all our big applications, or big-ish applications, is that people see an indicative layout, which will be in reserve matters later, and automatically assume that that's what it's going to be, and clearly that's been the case here, and they're disappointed, quite reasonably and understandably, that they don't achieve what they felt they were achieving with regard to their own protection and peace of mind in terms of their outlook and proximity to the listed building particularly, but other properties as well. So, it is a difficult one. As the chairman of the parish council said, and others I think have mentioned, it's been in Bramley Parish Council's list of places to develop since well before the middle 90s. So, and in the early days, of course, there was no reason, no way whatsoever, we would get planning permission for anything other than, on an exception site like this, anything other than affordable housing. The owner, or the first owner, who has since, of course, sold on, was very much aware of that and very sympathetic to the village, and that's a long-standing history. The family have been in the village for probably 100 years, and had been, and were very helpful in that sense and communicative. So, as they say, 62%, not that it was just 60%, but the extra 2.5%, not quite sure what it's going to give me, but nevertheless, it's a very interesting number, and a number perhaps the rest of the borough might aspire to in some of the developments that they achieve or wish to achieve. But anyway, I understand what people are saying, I have my concerns about listed building, but when you stand in the field, the level of bush and tree cover on that eastern boundary is quite substantial, very difficult actually to see much of the property, but of course, once you build up, the height of the buildings will be showing over top, and that's presumably the main concern. So, I look forward to any other comments that people come before we come to a decision.
Thank you. Officers, yes, Elizabeth.
Chairman, sorry, we were just checking facts in relation to the outline planning permission, of course. Drainage was dealt with at the outline. The indications were that Thames Water had no objection at that point, they didn't even request a condition, because basically, discharging to the mains drainage system would be a private matter between the developer and Thames Water, and if there's no condition required at that point, we are able to assume there's absolutely no objection in principle, and it certainly wouldn't be appropriate to be raising it through the reserve matters issue. What they have actually come back with here, I think you may have cross-referenced, sorry, that probably isn't the clearest of responses, but what they're actually saying here, it's actually not relevant at this stage as a reserve matters, because it is a matter for the outline for which there was no objection in principle. Just looking at colleagues, if they've got anything further to add to that.
Thank you, Elizabeth. So, I've got the outline approval decision notice here, and we do have a condition requiring details of services to be provided, so that's services on site, i.e. electrics and connecting to sewage. It is, it's a condition that we use in regard to position of these two trees, but that does have to be submitted to us to be agreed. So that's quite helpful there. In terms of the other matters Chairman at council Townsend raised, in regard to plot nine, for us as officers, it is acceptable because of the angle it's at. I know the outline stage is indicative, but it did have a, the indicative plan did show it actually slightly further angled towards the Park Court to the north, and what they've done, actually, they've made the angle greater, sharing away from Bramley Park Court. So, it's because of the angle and its position that we find that dwelling there acceptable. In terms of bin storage, on the detailed landscape plan, you can't really see it on there, but the bin storage is simply just to be stored behind the gates down the sides of residential properties, and so not to be stored out the front of the dwellings. And for the flats, it is to be stored behind again as well, they have site access. The two flats above the garages is to be stored underneath within that structure. And in terms of parking concerns, yes, clearly, some of these spaces will be visible as you enter the site, but we've had to, the purpose had to provide a balanced layout between meeting Waverley's parking guidelines and getting a good number of houses on the site with good-sized gardens, so overall, with the landscaping, us as officers are satisfied with that as a layout. I hope it's helpful, Chairman.
Thank you, Tim. Councillor Townsend, would you like to come back on that at all? You're looking a bit puzzled.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand a bit about the trees and the condition, sorry. What was that that you mentioned? I was slightly confused, sorry, Tim.
On the outline permission, there is a condition requiring details showing the services to serve each dwelling to be submitted. It is a condition that is used in regards to proximity to trees, so we look at it in terms of where the services are in relation to trees of importance, but what that plan will show is the details of the services and the location and their connections.
Thank you. Councillor Rogerski.
Thank you, Chairman. Is it possible, please, to see the original proposed site layout? Right, excellent. Thank you. Can I, if I may, can I come back? When one of these sites come forward on a green field, if the parish council and the residents are for it, I'm not going to argue against that, and I think it's obviously welcome because of its mixed use, but it's an observation more than anything else, is the concern that's already been raised about the car parking. As an entrance to the scheme, I don't think it's attractive. I think it sends off the wrong message that when there's no cars there, you know, it becomes a bit of a playground, and it's like a bit of a concrete jungle as you enter into what could be otherwise an attractive site if well thought, laid out. And again, it's just that missed opportunity of not developing to the maximum, because if you are going to lose these beautiful green fields, then at least maximise the benefits of getting the most out of it. And it just reminds me slightly of some good negotiations we had, officers had in Cranley with Amlet's Lane, where there was little pockets of car parks that we felt were inappropriate, and that was resolved, so I'm sure matters of this scale can be resolved and still deliver the numbers we're talking about, otherwise we can end up with what looks like quite an ugly concrete entrance into an otherwise acceptable scheme. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Band.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, it is disappointing that the current developer hasn't worked more closely with the parish council, but nonetheless, they have produced a site layout. We may think that various aspects of it could be improved. I'm personally not quite so concerned about the car parking spaces. There is a big tree planting at the entrance, which I think would break it up from the existing Ricardo Court area, and I think that's quite a good positive aspect of this site, because Ricardo Court itself is somewhat bare and gaunt, although the additional new car parking spaces are undoubtedly welcome for the residents there. The test for me is really, is this layout so unacceptable that we can really find grounds for refusal, bearing in mind the initial application which is already there? And whereas no doubt it could be, as I say, it could be improved to meet some people's ideas, I think on balance that we would have a hard job sustaining an objection to this on grounds of the layout itself. The number of houses and their distribution was already been set by the outline application. They've got to be accommodated on the site with the various facilities. This developer has decided, you know, in his wisdom to do it this way. Yes, I accept it's disappointing, there hasn't been more detailed consultations, but I think in other aspects, I think I find, personally find it hard to actually see grounds where I feel we could really sustain a serious objection to this layout. It might just be helpful and informative to encourage the developer, if he were minded, to approve it, to continue detailed discussions, to carry continued discussions on the details with the local community to try and resolve these, and perhaps include that as an informative to actually encourage in the final details, a bit more integrated consultation. But apart from that, I find it really difficult to see how I can raise a serious objection in planning terms. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Gray.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a small question, if Tim could just go back to the previous layout. Thank you. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. There's 11 blocks on there, and there's 14 on the proposed layout. Can officers explain during the discussions why such a significant change was made? I mean, obviously, they had discussions. I'm talking about the site blocks, so on that particular outline permission, you've got two, four, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. And if you look at the proposed ones, we've now got 14, so they've obviously spread them out. Now, I mean, we've obviously had very detailed discussions. What was the developer's motivation for that? It seems to have had quite an impact on the setting of the grade-two listed building there. Could you help me in terms of trying to come up to a conclusion on this? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Tim, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Chairman. I mean, yeah, the outline permission, I don't know why there are less blocks there than proposed, but what you do have here is, they've tried to keep the, well, they've provided a lot more houses than flats under the detailed layout. So, for example, this here is two one-bed flats, there's two flats here and there's four flats there, and the rest is houses. So, in doing that, that does create more blocks naturally, when you're giving private gardens to each house as well and parking. So, in terms of the layout, and I mean, that essentially would be the reason why there is more blocks and was indicative, be shown on the outline.
Thank you. Would you like to come back, Councillor?
So, what you're telling me is there's more properties under the proposed site layout than the previous one, or the same number of properties, they're just structured differently? Which one?
It's the same number of properties. There's outline approval for 24, and this is a details pursuant to for 24.
So my conclusion is that they've spread them out, and therefore, they've lost some of the advantages that was in the original layout. That's the point I was making.
Yes, Elizabeth.
Chairman, just a small point on that. I think it's really important not to focus too much on the subtle differences between the indicative layout and the proposed layout, because the tests that we are providing to the applicant for those two plans are different. Clearly, at outline, they're being asked to establish whether, in principle, that number of dwellings is capable in some form of being provided on that site, but by definition, they are not being asked to provide a worked-up scheme, meeting every single test, to demonstrate that the layout and the form are acceptable, otherwise there'd be no point asking them to go another round to reserve matters. So, I understand the question that's been asked, I understand there is some disappointment that perhaps the layout isn't identical, but in fairness to the applicant, they are following the law and procedure in that the detail and the fully worked-up layout and design is that which is before you, and the test is very much not, is it different to the outline indicative, it is whether in its own right, it meets the planning tests and is worthy of approval. So I hope that's helpful. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I would add that from experience, indicative layouts, you take as a generic house type, if you like, and it's virtually rubber stamped round just to prove that you can get 24 units on there. With this scheme, I have to say, from the street elevations, the developer, I think, has gone to a lot of trouble to get different types, and as the agent explained, as you go around corners, you'll get sort of double-aspect houses, and when you're trying to do something like that, trying to make something more attractive, then it's very easy to lose the standard rubber stamp job of 20 units. Councillor Rogerski.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I absolutely get the point about not making the comparison between the original and what's proposed. It was just, the point I was making was, because I think Elizabeth explains it extremely well, I think the point being is that what we're saying, the current scheme, it could have had more benefits to it in terms of its layout. Thank you, Chairman.
Any further comments before we move to the recommendation? Right, councillor Byrne.
Just one quick one. I haven't done the sum, so I might find that I'm speaking out of turn, but of course, one of the things we have done is a housing needs survey, and certainly something that we had as a pre-app fairly recently, where officers were using a different set of guidelines with regard to house or dwelling sizes, and concentrating them all on one-bedroom flats, and we, our housing needs survey suggests two-bedroom properties are much more acceptable and needed. Whether that makes a difference, I don't know, but there are obviously variations that have come out through that housing needs survey, I think.
Thank you. Shall we move to the recommendation? Right, the recommendation is, or the revised recommendation, according to the update sheet, that subject to conditions and amended conditions 1 and 16 on the committee update sheet, the reserve matters of layout, scale, appearance and landscape be approved. Can I have all those in favour, please?
Seven in favour.
And those against? Any abstentions? One. In that case, the recommendation is approved and that application is passed. We have no items to consider in exempt session, so thank you for your time, members.